Okay, I think we, I think we're ready to get started, so let me call this June 20, June 20, Planning Commission meeting to order. And we'll do a roll call of attendee, of commissioners.
Yes, Chair. Vice Chair Harrison.
Here.
Secretary Brew Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Argawal, who is joining us online.
I think you're muted still.
She's, you're muted.
I, I'm not feeling well today.
It's okay.
Thank you for joining us, however, but she is present, and then Commissioner Timmons.
Yes, here.
And we have a call.
Okay, great. The next approval of minutes, I think we had one set of minutes to approve, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll move, I'll move approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
And did anybody have any corrections? I didn't.
I didn't.
No.
Okay, we need a roll call since we have one of them.
Yes, sir. Vice Chair Harrison.
Yes.
Secretary Brew Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Argawal.
Yes.
And Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Okay, next is the consent calendar. I don't believe we have anything on consent, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Brown Act, public forum, is anybody wishing to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda, either if you're here in the room, you should have submitted a speaker form. If you're joining us virtually, you would raise your hand on the Zoom application. So do we have any speakers on?
Yes, Vice Chair, we do have one member joining us here in the audience tonight that would like to speak under open forum, Erlindo Alfaro, and that speaker will have three minutes. In the meantime, for those of us joining us virtually, if you'd like to raise your hand, if you're interested in speaking on an item that is not on the agenda tonight.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Erlindo Alfaro. I'm a field rep for the Norcal Carpenters. I'm at a Local 152. I represent all the carpenters in Contra Costa County. I come here today to speak on the values of our membership and make sure that our members receive a proper prevailing wage and area standards. Carpenters deserve to earn fair wage, retirement, and medical benefits that help a worker provide and prosper not only for themselves, but family as well. Healthcare is important to be able to provide for their families. I'm grateful to have this benefit because a parent, when your child gets ill, one worries. Other situations would be more, more difficult. Apprenticeship, being a debt-free education guarantees we will continue to have trained, skilled, and experienced members that will be able to complete high-quality projects on time, and the number one thing, safety. For me, it opened up many, many doors to learn different type of carpentry. Local hire, it would benefit both the workers and the community in many ways. Carbon emission being reduced by vehicle miles driven by construction workers, it would lead to more construction workers to be more involved with the community with events like this one. It would make work and life balance for families in this county. Being a husband and a father has given me opportunity to spend more time with my family, being able to coach my son's soccer team, or doing whatever daily activity my wife wants to get into. Being a member of the carpenters has given me all these tools from education, starting as an apprentice, to journeyman, and now a field rep, helping me with being able to provide healthcare for my family, as well as local hire keep me close to home. I think everyone working under these agreements deserve the opportunity to earn these same benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others people wishing to address the commission on an item not on the agenda that here in the council chambers?
So that's the only speaker card I have for open forum here in the audience, and then online, it does not look like we have any hands raised, so I think that concludes our open forum speakers.
Then we'll move on to our item number one, the PLN 22-084 Homewood Suites Hotel. It's a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit and design review for a 103-room, five-story hotel to be located in the Hilltop area, and I'll turn it over to staff for a report.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair Harrison, presenting this item tonight will be Senior Planner Hector Lopez. I'll turn it over to Hector.
Can you hear me?
And KCRT, if we could have the presentation, please?
Can you see the slides? All right, thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Hector Lopez from the planning department. Well, I'm here to present a new project, the Homewood Suites Hotel, PLN 22084, which consists of the construction and operation of a 103-room, five-story hotel on a 5.69 vacant parcel located at 3101 Garrity Way. The project site is a 1.69 acre, so vacant, is located on the northeast corner of Garrity Way and Bloom Drive. The site was the former location of a well-known restaurant, which was subsequently demolished after a fire in 2020. What's remaining on the site are paved areas, parking lot, grasses, and, and some, some trees. The site is, has a gradual downward grade from north to south with very steep downwardly sloping hillside along its northern and western edges. The project site is on CR, Regional Commercial District. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit, design review, and a waiver for the construction and operation of the 103-room hotel. The waiver is for to adjust the required ground floor ceiling height from 16 to 14 and a half feet. The CUP, the conditional use permit, is required to allow the operation of a hotel in the commercial, regional commercial district. Also, the CUP will allow more than the number of parking, maximum number of parking spaces. 81 parking spaces are proposed, while the estimated parking demand is 52. Here's the location of the corner of Garrity Way and Bloom Drive. As you can see, the hotel is five-story. It was approved basically recently by the Design Review Board. The site plan that you see on this page shows two driveways, basically, that will, basically, basically, you're going to have is an access from Garrity that basically will circle around the building, and it will, like, basic vehicles will exit very close to the corner of Bloom Drive. The building will be sited pretty much at the center of the site. Amenities that are provided include a nice courtyard located on the east side, not to be able to, to take advantage of the, of the views of Sao Paulo Bay. On March 22, 2023, the Design Review conducted a study session and provided to the applicant design recommendations. The applicant had incorporated most of the requested changes, and later on, it was presented at the May 8, 2024 Design Review Meeting, and was approved subject to minor modification. The planning, the Design Review recommended approval of the design to the Planning Commission, and that's why we're here for final approval. The hotel basically required a conditional use permit in the zoning district. Based on the information by the applicant about the operations, the average occupancy of the hotel may range between 100 and 150 guests. The hotel will be served by basically between nine to 12 employee, that will basically work a daily shift. The ground floor height reduction in this district will be from 15 feet to 14 feet and a half. The hotel, basically, is a single structure that will be located on a very large site, and will be located at the center of the site away from the street, and the reduction will not be significant as seen from vantage point around the site. The maximum number of parking spaces, the proposed project provides 81, and the project is providing 20 more parking than is required, which represents about 30% greater than, than required. So it's staff conducted a survey of the two existing hotels on Garrity Way, and we found out that the two hotels exceed the maximum threshold of parking, which is approximately 35, 45%. Hotels in the Bay Area located farther away from destination center are more likely to be more car-dependent. The additional parking will assist the hotel on it in serving future clients, and for the hotel to be economically viable. The project is consistent with the general plan, and is located on a site that is less than five acre. The project had a very intense environmental analysis, and was determined that it's an infill project, and, and it would not result in any significant effect related into traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. So the project is under, basically, has been determined to be exempt, using one of the exemptions under CE1, which is the infill, infill development. The development, basically, will further the objective of the general plan. It will generate jobs, economic activity, while also meeting the city's call for construction of new hotel, and new commercial infrastructure. The project is compatible with the immediate surrounding, and is consistent with the regional commercial misuse. Based on the findings and statements of fact, staff recommend that the Planning Commission approve the project subject to conditions. Any questions, please?
Do we have any questions for staff at this point? If, if not, I'll open the public hearing.
I have a couple of questions before the public hearing, I guess. One question I have is for staff, and that's regarding design review. So in this case, we are actually approving, that the Design Review Board is recommending to us approval of a design review permit, but that permit is coming from us. I, I don't remember seeing this before, so the reason that they're here is because of the conditional use permit, so we're, we're reviewing that, but there's also approval of the design review permit. So is that fairly typical?
That is correct. In situations where there's a land use and a designer view permit involved, the ultimate decision maker is the Planning Commission for the designer view permit on the recommendation of the designer view board.
Okay, that was just a procedural question. Thank you. I do have questions about whether this project is consistent with Hilltop Horizon, the specific plan that's being developed, and knowing what we know about the Hilltop Horizon, are there any impacts? So I don't know if you want to answer that now or later in discussion?
Yeah, I could address that now. As far as the application submittal, I believe it occurred before we embarked on the Hilltop Horizon specific plan, so it does have a little bit of a safeguard there. In terms of consistency with the plan, we have been sharing the design drawings and project with our consultants, ESA, so they have all along been aware of this potential project moving forward, and we've been in discussions and determined it would be consistent with the existing use of uses that are up there and the potential uses that could be developed. This particular site in the work-in-progress land use plan that we have rolled out to the community is designated for high-density residential, and we anticipate that that designation would allow for a hotel in the future.
Okay, and so the team is actually aware of this project?
That's correct.
And it does seem consistent. Question for Planner Lopez. Will the project maintain the existing trees that are on the two streets surrounding the site?
I don't think, I think there are new trees, as I recall, but we can ask.
Maybe we could confirm that.
Yeah, we can confirm that.
They're, they're quite mature, and they're part of a extensive landscape along the street that extends beyond the site, so it seems beneficial to maintain those trees. Let's see. I, I don't have any other questions at this time.
Thank you.
Planner Hector, I did have questions. I'm not quite sure if my raised hand was seen or not.
I was just about to recognize you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So this is extremely exciting, and as a planning commissioner, I'm really thrilled to see a five-star hotel coming. So a few different questions. One, just a confirmation, it is a five-star, right?
We're going to have commissioners, questions for the applicant a little bit later, so we'll save that for the applicant. Okay.
Okay. My second, my, my next question is that, and this might also be a question for the applicant, but you know, the Chevy's restaurant served as a gathering spot for the local community. Is there going to be a restaurant that is going to be part of this hotel?
No, no, there will be no restaurants.
Okay, no restaurant, okay. Okay, and the third is that I know that some of the hotels over there have been taken over by the government for different programs. Is this one also going to go that route, or will it be a hotel? I know there's a shortage of hotels, and we really need hotel space, but i- is there any plan for this hotel to become a program hotel?
Commissioner Argawal, are you referring to Project Home Key? The statewide program to take over motels and hotels and utilize them for homeless shelters? Is that?
Yes, yes.
I think the applicant could probably best address that question, but obviously, it's a brand-new development. At this point in time, I don't think it's something that's contemplated, but I, I think it's a good question.
Okay, great, yeah. So I'll save, save some of these for the applicant, then.
Okay, thank you. Then if we have no other commissioner questions at the moment, I'm going to open a public hearing, and first of all, I think we'll hear from the applicant, and I think we get, what, about 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes?
Good evening. My name is Dana Dean. I'm with Hanson Bridget, and I represent the, I'm taller than I realized, I think. I represent the property owner, 5'10 hospitality, and, as well as the Patel family. So to start, I think maybe I'll introduce our team. I have with me tonight Mr. Dylan Patel, the owner. He's going to be able to answer some of the use questions that came up. We also have Alex, our civil engineer, who can speak to some of the questions, or any questions that he has. And then also, I believe on Zoom, we have Costas, who is the architect for the project, and I'm understanding that the city's consultant for the environmental document, the categorical exemption, is also available, Mary Beam from FCS, and I'm the lawyer, so I can maybe answer some legal questions if they come up. I, I want to start by saying we are so very pleased to finally be before you, and proud and happy to be able to support and support the, the project as presented to you. As you can see from the story in the staff report that Annette Hector mentioned, we've been at this for a while. We worked really hard with Design Review to address the subtleties around it. It's a, you know, all of us remember Chevys, and it's kind of a very special place, and we want to respect the future of the Hilltop area. You, you might have noticed that it's a sort of a hotel cluster, which is actually important in the industry. It's a beautiful location for, for a hotel in terms of the access to the freeway. So we're, we're excited to be here. I do want to get to some of the questions that were asked with, so I'll just do that, if that's okay. With regard to the trees, I think if you take a look at the staff report, kind of around, let's see, what I have is page 39 of 99, that's our design, those are our design documents. Along there, you will see that we're keeping trees and then adding a bunch more. A lot of work went into the landscaping, and, and respecting the hillside. I think Hector might have mentioned we actually reoriented the project so that in the patio area, which will be available for events and is expected to be used for events, you now can kind of see out onto the water. So that's, we're hoping that's very lovely and is used by the community. So trees, events. In terms of the commissioner's question about the five-star hotel, I'd really love to have Mr. Patel come up and talk about the, this is a Hilton model, right, is one of the models that they use. It's a brand-new hotel. There's no intention of using it for anything but hotel access or Project Home Key or other things at this moment. This is a brand-new investment, and it's expected to be used for Hilton Honors members and other folks. So, yeah, so why don't we start with that? Dylan, would you come up and talk? And then if you have questions about the use or the staffing, Dylan would be able to help with that.
Thank you.
Good evening. So in regards to the stars of the hotel, it would be, this is an extended stay property, so all the rooms have kitchenettes in them. It's, Hilton classifies it as upper upscale, so it would probably be about a three-and-a-half star hotel. We would see four-star hotels in full-service properties with restaurants, room service. This hotel won't have that.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other questions for the applicant at this time?
Yes, I do, Commissioner Harrison.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, you know, this is a great project, and I'm very supportive of it, and I think that even if it's not five-star, one is that that data needs to be revamped in the report so that it's accurate, that it's three-and-a-half stars or upper upscale. I think that that's, that's good, because I think that there is a need for an extended-stay kind of hotel. Has the applicant and Mr. Patel, have you considered, and, and, and I'm not even going to put this in the, bring it up as a conditional use point, but have you considered some kind of a restaurant or some kind of happy hour gathering for the community, or is that, or what are your thoughts on that?
Yes, so Hilton does require us to hold a social hour, which is Monday to Thursday, that is limited exclusively just to the hotel guests. We don't have anything for the community as per se. Restaurants aren't a typical thing to see in extended-stay properties. Again, that goes back to the whole full-service hotels, Holiday Inn's, Double Trees, Marriott's.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, I would suggest, in the staff report, there's a pretty excellent rendering of the gathering area. On what I have is page 40 of 99, can sort of show more particularly what I was describing before.
Other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. If something comes up.
I, I do, okay. So I'm curious, the, one of the variances that are being asked for is the reduction of ground floor height from 16 feet to 14.5 feet. What is the reason for that?
So I can speak generally to it, and then our architect's on, on the wire, so to speak. But if you'll notice, it's, around those same pages, there, you can see the requirements for the, the height of the entire building and the parapet, parafet. Anyway, the thing that hides the other things.
Right.
And in order to meet those height requirements, we couldn't quite get to 16 feet on the first floor, and just because of the nature of the way these things are crafted, it made sense to make the adjustment in the floor. Costas is on the, on the Zoom, maybe he would like to weigh in?
I can address that question, too.
I'm sorry?
I can address that question. The
Okay.
The maximum height in the CR zoning district is 55 feet.
Could you get your mic a little closer?
The maximum height of the district is 55 feet. They're five-story. The architect has made, has made some adjustment to the height to bring it down. In order to comply with the requirement, it will have to go over 55 in order to have five-story, and that will trigger a variance that will be very difficult to get since it's based on hardship. So the waiver is a very small 10% reduction, and that's why the applicant was encouraged to do that instead.
Thank you for that. I mean, I, I guess, I'm wondering whether the, the actual regulation may need to be revisited if, in fact, it's preventing projects like this from, from actually being built to SPAC. The other way to address it would have been to increase the overall height of the building, so have a variance for the overall height and keep the ground floor at 16 feet. But I understand there's no restaurant here. Generally, you want the higher height where you have public spaces, you have a grander ground floor, generally with a, with a restaurant. There's no restaurant here, so there's really not the need. So I understand it, understand where the, where the issue's coming from. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
I did have, let's see, I thought I had another question, but I guess I don't. Thank you.
Okay. If, if there are no other questions at this time from commissioners, we'll ask the applicant to sit down, and we may call you back up.
Thank you, thank you. So again, just, we're, we're happy to be here, happy to answer any further questions, and we appreciate all the effort that staff has put in all along, and, and your time as well. And we ask that you approve the project. Thank you.
And Chair Harrison, we do have a hand raised by Commissioner Argawal as well.
Okay.
So, quick question. I wanted to discuss this and raise a couple points with the commissioners. When do I do that, Planner Rojas?
That probably would be most appropriate after the public hearing under your deliberation, unless it's a question specifically for staff or the applicant.
Okay, sounds good. So I will do it during deliberation.
Great, thank you. I think, I don't know, is there anyone that registered to speak in opposition to the project?
Not in the audience. I'll turn over to members of the public. I do see one hand raised. I believe it's Ron Patel. Is that with your group? I'll go ahead and give you permission to speak.
I'm sorry, that, Ron Patel is the project manager as well as the applicant?
So I'm not sure, Ron, if you want to speak as, as part of the, the project team, you're able to do that. I think you had some time left over, but it's, it's not necessarily required for you to speak if you want to just pass it on to the.
Oh, yeah, you should like to. Yeah, I can speak up about the project.
Oh yeah, if you'd like to. Yeah, I can speak up about the project and this will be the new construction and the five-story. And it's mainly used for the Hilton, just like Gina said about Hilton owners, Hilton members. And this will be the beautiful things for the community and it will bring some value to the city also. And it can increase the employment for the city and town.
Great, thank you for that. Okay, there's no one here to, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this project, either on Zoom or here in the room?
I don't have any hands raised and that was the last speaker card.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and we'll go commission to deliberate what action we would like to take. Did you want to say something?
Oh, I, I would come by the outdoor patio. Have you been out in the wind? It's a funnel.
Yeah. Okay, so Commissioner Argawal, I think you had some comments?
Yes, yes, I do, Commissioner Harrison. So, so these are, this is a stream of consciousness for discussion with the other commissioners. I'm also not sure what, you know, whether there is any sort of authority here if the applicant meets objective criteria. But I'll just throw this out and, and my thought anyways. I'm not married to it either. But, you know, where Chevy's was, it was a beautiful space overlooking the ravine. And it genuinely was a gathering space for local folks. And local folks really miss that because it was on the upscale side with a view, happy hour. And it really brought the community together in that area. I'm wondering whether Hilltop would be better served by a full-service hotel with a restaurant that would be open to local people versus an extended-stay to kind of vitalize the area in terms of walking and, and sort of, you know, people, people just communing together. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out for discussion by my fellow commissioners.
Anybody have any thoughts on that? I can share mine. I, I think, Commissioner Argawal, I think, that I didn't experience Chevy's. I wasn't here in town at that, when that was there. But I appreciate the idea of we, a gathering place for that part of the community. But perhaps this hotel is not it, but it, my thought is it could be a catalyst for other businesses to now want to go to that location. And perhaps Chevy's too will show up next to it. But some restaurants that can fulfill the function that you are desiring to see in that area. So my thought would be, it would be useful to get something in the area to show the development community that Richmond cares about this area. We have a good applicant with a solid project and perhaps someone will come in and add something to that. So that's my take.
No, I, I would just concur with what was just said. I feel like you need a, sort of an anchor sometimes and that could possibly be that.
I will pitch in and say that I agree with Commissioner Argawal, that it would be a better project for the community if there was a restaurant on the ground floor that was open to the public. And it'd probably do well. I don't know that the commission can require something like that. I think probably not. But I'm, I would like to hear what the applicant say, say why it was decided to do the extended-stay hotel rather than a full-service hotel.
Yes. I could come up, that'd be great. Guess I need to open the public hearing again. No.
So full-service hotels tend to be much bigger size than the one that we're proposing. They tend to sit on at least three-and-a-half to four acres of land. They tend to be at least a hundred and eighty rooms minimum. When we started this project, when we purchased the land about four years ago, we originally wanted to bring another restaurant back to the site. We reached out to a lot of other brands, a lot of other franchises, companies out there. Nobody wanted to come in, at least to that location. So we went with what we know that we can do, which is the hotel. We did feasibility studies that told us basically that extended-stay was the best route to go. There is no upscale extended-stay property like this. The nearest one would probably be Emeryville, like the Hyatt House over there and other hotels. We don't have anything in a fifteen-minute driving distance. And yes, I believe that this hotel will be a catalyst for other businesses, other hotels.
If I could, I would also add that we're expecting roughly a hundred guests a day. Those folks are going to go out into the community, to other restaurants, to, you know, the places on Fitzgerald or wherever they might go. So they're spread, it's like the line from Hello Dolly about money being like manure. It's best to spread it around and encourage folks to grow.
Thank you for that metaphor.
So we love the idea of the larger scale, but the, the site itself really speaks to what we've proposed and also your understanding that the other hotels are there as well. It just creates a moment in the community that allows those, the, the quality guests to go out and experience the better parts of Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we are having the specific plan, I'm sure the specific plan will consider the need for things like restaurants in that area.
Yes, Vice Chair Harrison, I was about to add that under the Hilltop Horizon specific plan and the current land use plan that's under consideration, we've heard loud and clear from the community that there is a need for a central gathering space that is very public, that could be open to, you know, mobile vendors, for example. That could have some adjacency to the retail component that people would like to see as well. So open space and gathering spaces are very integral to the land use plan that we've drafted. So I'm happy to share that with the commissioners so that they could see we're, we're thinking about those types of opportunities for the Hilltop area.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Commissioner Argawal if she had a response. So, and I, I would just add to that comment that, and to Commissioner Argawal, there, it looks like there's a vacant parcel immediately adjacent and uphill from this site. And maybe there's a way to entice a restaurant to come to that site when the hotel is built. So, I'm sorry, Chair, but I did remember my question. I don't know why I didn't write it down, but I did have a question about the corner. That's a very important corner. This site is very visible. And I'm wondering if there will be, I know the hotel across the street has a monument sign on that corner. Will there be some kind of attractive landscape and, and signage on the corner of Bloom Drive and Garrity Way? Sorry to bring you back up and down all the time, but thank you.
Getting your steps in.
I'm very happy to do it. So now I have to, in the staff report, I think there's some indications about this in particular. And if we look at our design, I know it's in here. I'm sorry I didn't pull up exactly where it shows, but perhaps, you have it?
Yeah, no, there will be no, no sign of the corner. The sign will be in, basically on the, on the building and then on the souder, eastern location of the site near the driveway.
The, yeah, I do see the rendering now and it does not look like there's a sign there. There's a sign on the hotel. But I, well, I guess I, I will throw it back to the applicant to ask whether you would be amenable to a condition that requires a monument sign at that corner with attractive landscaping to kind of fill the, the, the design of the corner and see the hotel behind it.
So the architect may want to speak to this as, as well. My concern is agreeing to conditions like on the fly. We do have a contract with Hilton that, and they're, as I'm sure you're well aware, they're very specific on their branding and the requirements of it. So to the extent, so my concern would be that I don't know as I sit here right now, stand here, if that's allowed.
My understanding that the, one of the issues that has been raised has been the driveway located at that corner so close to the intersection.
Yeah.
One of the concerns is the driveway is too close and also the landscaping that has to be maintained very low because of the, you know, there's a lot of very fast driving going on.
Understood.
So I think that has to be evaluated. I don't know if, you know, if that can be evaluated on spot. Definitely.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could.
The traffic engineer should see and give the parameter as far as the height of the monument.
Okay.
We could, I mean, I could say if possible, right? We don't, so it would be a little bit tricky for us to honestly, because of the Hilton branding and those specific requirements, to say absolutely. But we certainly will look, would be very willing to look at it. The other thing I'll mention is if you look at that rendering, it's very plain what's, what's happening here. I respect that this is a very important corner. It absolutely is. But I think folks will be able to determine just by looking.
So I'd like to go to Planning Director Rojas. Do you have a recommendation for how to handle a commission, a, a condition like this that, that encourages the applicant to, you know, address the corner in a meaningful way?
Yeah, with appropriate landscaping and we could delegate that to staff, but you can make it a condition so that you're encouraging the applicant and their architect to look at the possibility and if feasible to go ahead and implement it.
Do, is a project like this subject to the city's public art requirement?
Yes, I believe that there is a certain threshold for the amount of expenditure. I believe it's half a million, which I assume this project will easily.
That might also be a good spot for some, some public art.
It's subject to that, yeah.
If you're, if trying to draw attention to that area. Because it looks like they're putting their monument sign up the hill because I'm assuming that's where the cars will be coming.
Right. And that is probably appropriate that it be there. I, this would be a second sign or maybe a piece of public art.
Yeah.
So if it, if the commissioner allows, I'd like to make a motion.
Absolutely.
So I'm, I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 2408 approving Planning Application Number PLN 22084, subject to the conditions included in the staff report, as well as an additional condition that says that the applicant will enhance the corner through the use of additional landscaping, signage, or public art.
Would you like to add if feasible, if determined feasible?
If feasible.
Sir, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay. We have no further discussion, then we can go ahead and have a roll call on that.
Yes, sir. Vice Chair Harrison?
Yes.
Secretary Brubaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Argawal?
Yes.
And Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Great, thank you. And I don't have the appeal thing in front of me. My computer is frozen. So what is the appeal window for anybody that wants to?
That would be July first, twenty twenty-four, five p.m.
Anybody wishes to appeal this planning commission decision to the planet, to the city council, they would have until July first to file that appeal. And then it'll go from there. Okay. Well, thank you all very much for your project. Good luck with that. It looks like it will be a good addition to our community. Okay, next, next item is item number two, the Greenhenge Marijuana Cannabis Cultivation Facility. And this is AP, it's PLN 23-265. And I'll turn it over to staff for a report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Harrison. This item tonight will be presented by our contract planning staff from MIG and specifically Gabrielle de la Vallade. Hopefully I pronounced it sort of okay. Go ahead and take it away.
All right. Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Gabrielle and I'm a contract planner working on behalf of the city of Richmond. And I would presenting the.
Can you get the mic a little closer?
Sorry about that.
I'm a.
All right. And I'll be presenting the proposal for the Greenhenge Cannabis Cultivation Facility. So the recommended action is to review and take public comments and to conditionally approve PLN 23265 for a conditional use permit to allow for the use of commercial cannabis cultivation at AD West Ohio. The approximately three-point-three-acre project site is located at AD West Ohio Avenue, north of Interstate 580 and within the Santa Fe neighborhood. The site contains two existing structures, a newly constructed building located towards the rear of the parcel, and a two-story industrial structure containing cannabis cultivation facility that was previously approved. The site is zoned industrial light and the general plan designation is business industry. The site is located within an industrial area totaling approximately sixty-eight acres. As of 2020, there has been at least five other cannabis use permits issued in proximity to this project site, including at the addresses of 50, 70, and 100 West Ohio. The other, other adjacent uses include glass installation, concrete installation, food production, and storage facilities. The project proposes a cannabis cultivation use located in the thirty-four-thousand-square-foot structure identified in yellow on the slide. The facility will include cultivation in office areas as well as shipping and receiving area and a secure main entry. The facility would also have a, a partial second level with rooms for processing, storage, and office space. And the facility would operate from eight to six, eight a.m. to six p.m. seven days a week and would require two full-time and five contract employees. Existing parking was approved as part of PLN 21048 and consists of forty-seven spaces reserved for AD West Ohio, including two ADA compliant spaces, six clean air van pool and EV spaces, and six existing bicycle parking spaces. The existing loading zone does not meet standards for length and a condition of approval is recommended to ensure the loading zone complies with dimensional requirements. Commercial cannabis cultivation businesses are required to submit supplemental plans in Richmond. These include plans for the disposal of unsold cannabis, odor prevention, mold prevention, and security. The applicant's plans are attached as exhibits D through K of the staff report. A conditional use permit is required for cannabis cultivation and all commercial cannabis activity must meet minimum distance requirements. These include locations such as high schools, kindergartens, parks, and community centers. The proposed project would meet these locational standards. And specifically, the nearest park is a thousand feet to the north and the nearest school is approximately eight hundred feet to the northeast. Abrams Associates Traffic Engineering prepared a TDM plan and identified trip production measures to reduce vehicle trips to no more than twenty new vehicle trips during peak commute hours. Therefore, the project would be forecast to meet or exceed the fifteen percent trip generation production threshold. The proposed trip production strategies primarily focus on van pool and ride-share programs. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan land use designation and complies with the zoning district requirements and will be installed in compliance with the current California Building Code. The proposed project is compliant with locational standards and application requirements for cannabis uses. Finally, the project can be found exempt from CEQA because the project would be, would use an existing structure. So the California Department of Cannabis Control, the DCC, is currently reviewing the applicant's license for a medium indoor cannabis cultivation permit. The applicant would be required to submit a copy of this approved license to the planning director prior to operation. And conditions of approval are recommended to ensure compliance with loading and adherence to submitted TDM and supplemental plans. The Santa Fe Neighborhood Council submitted a letter in support of the project and prior to. Uh, the Santa Fe Neighborhood Council submitted a letter in support of the project, and prior to this meeting, staff received seven public comments. Uh, these comments were primarily concerned with odor, while one pointed out retail-related items on the project site plans. A condition of approval is recommended to require the applicant to remove these retail items from the site plan as retail is a prohibited use for the site. Uh, three comments expressed support for the project, um, from residents and business owners in the area, and the police department has added that they have responded to calls at multiple cannabis cultivation sites in Richmond. As a reminder, here are the required findings for conditional use permits. Uh, the project is consistent with the general plan and is located in a 68-acre industrial area. Conditions of approval are recommended to provide an onsite community relations contact and to ensure the applicant adheres to these submitted plans to address odor and wastewater, among several other things. And additionally, the project is consistent with locational standards. Moreover, the project is consistent with the required fin, findings for the TDM plan, and that, in that the reduction measures are feasible for the site and will ensure vehicle trip production thresholds are met. Recommended conditions of approval include requiring the applicant to adhere to all conditions from the previously approved structure located at AD West Ohio, following the lighting, noise, and performance standards, restriping the existing loading zone to comply with dimensional requirements, remove retail-related keynotes from the site plan, allow for Richmond Police Department, uh, to have to conduct interior inspections at, on the site, and adhere to all submitted supplemental plans, including a security plan that aligns the security lighting system, have an onsite manager and an onsite community relations contact, establish and administer a community use fund for the benefit of the project area, and maintain adequate security systems, including video surveillance and real-time updates on an alarm system. Uh, so, staff recommends the planning condition, commission adopt the resolution attached to the staff report and approve the request for a conditional use permit with conditions of approval.
Does anybody have any questions of staff?
Uh, Vice Chair Harrison, I'd just like to add that we do have a member of our police department that's joining us, um, tonight. So, if you have any, uh, crime-related, um, questions, Lieutenant Dicious is, uh, on the virtual.
Okay. Go ahead.
For staff, thank you for the presentation. I am wondering about the displacement of the parking. So, this is a new building that's being built on an existing parking area. Um, and you showed a diagram with the parking, um, I believe that was a diagram with the parking, the existing parking that the building is being placed on top of, and that parking showed van spaces. Am I correct? And maybe you could bring that diagram up on the screen. Maybe I'm, I could be misreading that plan.
Um, yeah, so the project is not proposing, um, the construction of a warehouse. It's already existing, and the, um, the parking was approved under that application for that existing warehouse. So, the project would just be using the existing space, um, and would not be, um, including any proposal for any construction.
So, the, the building is...
Building's existing.
Yes.
Parking's being re-allocated to include these other...
Building's kind of like down here.
Mm-hmm. So, the photo doesn't show the building, but the building is existing.
Yes.
I see. Sorry I missed that. Okay. I will have a, a, a question for the applicant when that comes around, but that was my only question.
Okay.
And Chair Harrison, we do have, uh, Commissioner Argawal with her, and a hand up.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, um, thank you Planner Rojas. I do have a, a question for actually Lieutenant Dicious, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, please, uh, correct me. Is that right, Dicious?
It's close enough, ma'am, it's Dicious, yes, thank you.
Dicious, perfect, thank you. So, Lieutenant Dicious, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
What, uh, could you sort of tell us what type of, uh, activity, uh, do you see at cannabis, uh, growing facilities? Uh, are you called to those facilities more than other, uh, industrial, um, uh, sort of, uh, 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 than other, like, locations for other industries? And when called, what type of problems do you see?
So, in terms of the comparison and, like, which one we go to more, I didn't run those numbers. I was specifically asked to kind of, hey, what are your comments? What are the police department's, um, probably concerns or things that we would like to see if this were actually improved? I'm not here to say yes or no. There are two separate, um, establishments which we've responded to quite often since, I believe it's January 1st of 2020. Uh, one, I'm not gonna give the addresses right now, I'm not gonna air their dirty laundry per se, but I just want to say that we had 76 calls between, I think when I sent this email out, it's probably within the last month, or last three weeks. Uh, it's usually for burglaries, but we have had, as a result, pursuits happen where we do locate firearms. So, what, what has happened in some of these, uh, locations are people are trying to break in, steal the product, and unfortunately, when people break in, they usually, or several times, are actually armed as a result. So, at one establishment, 76 calls within about a three-and-a-half-year period. At another establishment, 51 calls that we responded to. Uh, and we also had nine what's called shot spotter activations within an immediate area which, uh, registers gunshots. So, once again, we didn't have any arrests as a result of that second location, but the possibility or probability that people that are involved in trying to burglarize it and break in were actually armed. So, those are kind of the incidents or the incidents, you know, that we actually come across, or breaking in, trying to steal product, and then, uh, they're armed many times.
So, what, so what I'm hearing Lieutenant Dicious is that, uh, the incidence of crime is higher because the product is attractive enough. Uh, it is, uh, uh, it is, uh, armed, like, people, like, y- you know, the, the, um, people are armed that are trying to get in. So, that increases the, uh, the, uh, the impact of the crime. And then, of course, I'm not sure, uh, whether it is residents who pay for, uh, uh, you know, the police staff to go out, or whether actually there is some kind of extra tax on businesses to cover the expense of, uh, of officer activity, uh, hi, uh, greater officer activity. Uh, because I, I do know that, um, that crime is an issue in Richmond, um, not just in certain inner-city areas, but also in, for example, the Hilltop neighborhood. And, uh, even though we request beat officers, uh, or, you know, do, do more patrolling, it's really difficult because of their busyness. And I'm wondering whether facilities like a cannabis facility are taking away, uh, police officers to, you know, to crimes in these facilities versus actually helping, uh, the Richmond taxpayer, the Richmond resident, uh, uh, y- you know, alleviate crime in their neighborhoods. I know I was personally, my mother and I were personally assaulted by a lady on Sunday afternoon in the bright sunshine on Hillview Drive, uh, you know, um, uh, literally assaulted, like, there was physical, y- you know, uh, my, my mother could have fallen, which would, you know, and died, she's aged. And, uh, and the, and the police came two hours later. So, I, you know, I just, you know, I, 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 I'll bring it up for discussion with commissioners later, but to the point you made, it seems, uh, that, uh, police, the police are called out by these facilities more. So, if there is a tax to cover that, that's great, but otherwise, the, the, uh, you know, uh, the policemen are, uh, uh, or, or women, they are not available for, uh, regular, uh, uh, residents of Richmond. So, that's concerning to me. Yeah, go on, please.
Absolutely, um, you know, I did add in my remarks to the, uh, Planning Commission, I believe is who I sent this to, is if, and I believe that if there are the measures taken where security is on scene, you know, you have, whether it be, uh, you know, whatever security measures you actually have, that's going to dramatically impact or reduce the possibility of these things happening. And I don't know if it's trial by error with some of these other establishments. We haven't gone there as often within the last, you know, maybe year or so. Maybe they've, um, added different security measures and things like that. So, I think from the, at the very forefront, in order to have those kind of measures in place, and then getting the input from the police and then ensuring that we kind of know what the place looks like, what the pros and cons are of it, you know, that would be beneficial, and it would hopefully limit or mitigate much of, uh, you know, what we've dealt with in the past. But I think having good planning on the beginning, on the forefront, is gonna, you know, prevent many of the issues which we've seen already in these other establishments. But I will say that we don't go out there as often as what we did when they first opened. So, I'm hoping if this does get approved, they can learn from those establishments and hopefully make it as safe as possible.
My concern, I will say Lieutenant Dicious, is that police resources are pulled from protecting, uh, everyday, uh, 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 mothers, fathers, and their children, uh, and their grandparents, and so on, uh, to support, uh, uh, this, uh, uh, these industries. Uh, and, and I, and I would like to see that those industries, uh, pay, uh, pay for that police help so that we as residents of Richmond are not shafted, uh, uh, y- you know, by these, because 76 is clearly a very high number. So, but I, I will bring that up for discussion when the, when commissioners deliberate. I really appreciate you coming today, uh, and, and providing your comments, uh, Lieutenant Dicious, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, there is an application fee for growing cannabis, there are, there's a 5% tax. There's, uh, a number of other fees involved with it. I remember looking this up, I don't know, a few years ago, and Richmond was one of the more expensive cities to grow cannabis in, as a matter of fact. So, I do know there is some revenue that's being generated by this activity. So, I hope, does that answer your question?
Um, uh, uh, you, you know, uh, no, no, not really, because the bottom line is that we would have to do the math to see whether a 5% tax covers this police activity, because it's, it's a real problem in Richmond and elsewhere in the US that there aren't enough, uh, officers, uh, to protect, uh, citizens, uh, uh, and, uh, and crime has become quite a challenge. So, I really appreciate the response, but, uh, mm, but I don't know if, uh, uh, if at the end of the day, the residents, uh, you know, I think they are suffering, uh, when, when we have these facilities with the heightened crime, uh, and, uh, and the police, uh, people are pulled, because they will be pulled. If someone's got firearms, uh, they are going to be pulled, uh, towards that activity and away from burglaries, et cetera, in residential communities. And, uh, not only is there a crime problem, but a big unhoused problem as well. And, uh, safety has become a very big issue.
Through the chair, I would also add that, um, the ordinance anticipated that, uh, security would be an important aspect of cannabis, uh, facilities throughout Richmond, so there is a requirement for a security plan. And I don't, I'm not sure, Gabrielle, if, um, if you can go into a little bit of the key, um, aspects of the security plan. I know that the applicant's here tonight as well, and they could fully delve into it. Um, perhaps, uh, understanding what their proposal is behind security might, um, help assuage concerns. So, I think Gabrielle, maybe the applicant can address the security plan as part of their comments.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have the applicant do that when they come up. I had one, excuse me, question for the police officer from Richmond as well. As I look at the site plan, I notice that between the building into which the project would be placed, uh, there's a B, a building adjacent to it with apparently a, uh, alleyway, if you will, between it and, between the two buildings. And I'm curious if you're familiar with, uh, at all with what the site plan indicates and whether that alleyway would present a, uh, particular challenge for police response or be a, uh, and then, uh, with attractive nuisance related to the project.
Trying to pull up the documents right now so I can confirm the spot that you're looking at, so... Let me click on these forms here.
Gabrielle, if you guys could pull it up on our end too, so the public might be able to see that too, that'd be great.
It, it's in, in the drawings, uh, that the applicant submitted. It's, uh, actually, it's the third one af, third page after the staff report, so it's about 20% of the way in. Exhibit, part of Exhibit A.
Yeah, I'm gonna pull up Google Earth, just, it might be easier for me.
Probably.
Just navigating some of those things can be problematic. So, if I'm seeing it correctly, and I'm gonna try to compare it to the... So, there's the building, building, so is it ki, it, so I guess my question to you, sir, is if I'm looking at what you're looking at, there's a red dot kind of up towards Ohio, are you seeing that? Maybe not. On the pictures that you're showing, are there like green trees kind of along?
Along Ohio, there's a, the landscape.
Through the chair, I, I'm gonna ask KCRT to pull up, um, the PowerPoint presentation. We might be able to see that on screen altogether.
Well, you know, what I'm looking at is be, there's the building that's going to be occupied by this project. It's sort of in the middle of the block, and closer to Ohio, there's an existing building that's more rectangular in shape.
So, look at the screen.
Yeah. Yeah, so you could, that, exactly, this, this, there's two strips on either side of the one called Adjacent Tenant. Our, our map on our packet's upside down, so they're on the north, it's on the south side, and the, I guess that would be the e, west, east side. Can you get that with the arrow? Do, do that make sense? Okay. Yeah, that, that area...
I think I see the alley you're, is it the alley you're talking about right there?
Yes.
I mean...
You have those all over town, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, if things are well lit, and I don't know if that's gonna be like an area for pedestrian travel or not, or if it's just a vacant space which might have fencing on either side. It really depends kind of how it's, how it's constructed, like, is there gonna be a door right there? Uh, I'm, I'm assuming that the entire area from Ohio and then kind of going south towards cutting, like, in, in that whole parking lot area and getting access to the actual property, I'm gonna assume is gonna be secured. So, I mean, how, how they navigate that, letting people in, letting people out? If it's just open and there's no, you know, barrier or, like, a person out there allowing people in or out, it potentially could be a problem. I mean, people hide and they se, and they secrete themselves in dark areas, and that's why looking and trying to navigate the best way to lighten things up and, you know, to have open spaces, so like clear lines, line of sight, so people can't, you know, be around building corners and things like that. I mean, it's very difficult to...
Yeah. What I'll do, I'll, I'll, maybe we, the applicant can tell us if they're taking any special security precautions for that area. Could it, just, it just pops out as me is, you know, what's, what, how would you make sure that doesn't become a place where, as you say, people are hiding around the corner, and when the, everybody goes home or whatever, there, there's a ability to navigate the area unnoticed. So, I, well, thank you for your look at that and your thoughts, and then I'll, I'll, we'll see what we can hear from the applicant as well. If there's, uh, no other questions at this time for, uh, staff, are there, are there any other people in the audience? Well, I guess we have now the applicant presentation would be next, and then we have pu, public comment. So, is the applicant, uh, ready, prepared to make a, a presentation?
Commissioner, my name is James Lee.
Commissioner, my name is James Lee. I'm here to represent Greenhing. Mr. Chan called me this morning, was sick, so he couldn't make it. I wanted to address several concerns as far as security is concerned. So I, I wanted to see if that, the crime that the officer spoke about isn't really concerning more illegal cannabis facility versus legal facility. We still have a lot of illegal facility in Richmond that I know have a lot of criminal crimes and robbery that is attached to it. So I'm just concerned if that was legal or illegal facility. We used to have a regulatory department. Sergeant Abicott led that department and we worked very closely with her. And, and crime has really lessened among the security, among the cannabis facilities. So this is thirty-four thousand square feet. They will have at all times three full-time security guard. There's several ways to break into cannabis facility. Number one ironically is through the roof. That's the number way people penetrate. What they do is they climb up to the roof, they open up the vent and they get in the facility. This facility is twenty-six feet high, so they're not gonna be able to get on that roof. And entrance is barricaded by steel doors. So in that particular region, there's three buildings. And the fourth one is the eighty, which is Greenhing, that surrounds the eighty west Ohio. And it really sits in the center of those three other buildings, which are currently active cannabis facility. And in those five years or four years they've been there, they've not had one issue because that cannabis campus is surrounded by fence. And at night, every corner is security guard. So imagine just like hotels.
Could you clarify, there are other cannabis facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, all of them is actually cannabis facility, fifty, seventy and one hundred. And eighty sits in the middle of those campuses. And therefore, there is not more secure in that area. And just like we heard earlier, if there's one hotel, it's good to have a second hotel. What makes this facility very unique and more safe is because each of these facility will have their own security. So it multiplies the security in that area. So in that little alleyway that, that you noticed, it's really not an alleyway. That drawing is, is harder to see because the drawing doesn't actually show the building. It's just a diagram of where the building sits. That hallway is actually where all the condenser A-C sits. And so you could barely get through that area. So, and it's surrounded by fence. So I think that's gonna be okay. That's not really an alley. So, and security is one, which is a very concern for the operator as well. Second is conservation. So because the facility is huge, they use drip system. And every water that goes through the system gets recirculated, purified and reused. None of the water ever leaves the facility, so they conserve the water. Let me see what else. It's, it's a high-tech facility. And so imagine a building, within the building, every room is built with refrigerator panels. And so no smell will come out. So it's a building within a building. And every building, every room will have a charcoal filter. So ninety-nine percent of that filter is, is purified before it gets sent out in the air. And so, in fact, I think one of the comments or letter that we received was Jeff Wright, who owns Bridge Storage, which is right behind the seventy west. Wrote that he doesn't smell anything. So smell is really not an issue in a lot of these high-tech facility.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I have one. Just kind of changing subject a little bit. I did notice in the floor plans for the project, there is a break room for employees. You have something like twenty-three employees, twenty-five? Five employees onsite all the ti- during the day, hours or something, yeah. The, I, I just was struck by the fact that this break room is in the interior of the si- of the building and there's no windows. It seems like kind of a grim space to put the, the break room. Then I looked at the site to see if, well, maybe there's some community, community space on the outside where any number of these facilities, people could sit outside and, and have a break. And I did not see one. Are you, is it possible? Well, first, is there a community space somewhere on the site that's outside that people can use?
Yeah, yeah. So we need a break room so the employees could get a break. And it's really interesting, during the day, when you actually go to that cannabis campus, people do kind of sit outside, eat outside. And there's like a community space, they put chairs. But, but yes, definitely they would need, wanna go out and get some fresh air.
So the employees in this facility would be able to use that outdoor space as well? As well as the people in the other four, is there four other buildings?
Fifty, seventy, hundred, so three other.
Three other cannabis facilities. So it seems like it could, could be pretty, pretty busy, pretty popular. And is that along the street? Do you know where that is?
So it's, it's really fenced off. It's a huge, I don't know what's the whole acreage of that lot is, but it's pretty big facility. And these facility is so high-tech, you really don't need a lot of people to manage it. It, it runs itself.
Yeah. Well, I'm mostly thinking about the quality of life for people who work there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I have a question. If Commissioner Brubaker, you're done. Are you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this question is for a planner, Rojas. Is Mr. James Lee the applicant?
No, I'm not the applicant.
So then, do the rules permit someone to speak? In what official capacity is Mr. Lee speaking? And do the rules permit Mr. Lee to speak on behalf of the applicant?
I'll let Mr. Lee answer as far as what capacity he's speaking to and I'll answer your question afterward.
Yeah, I'm, I'm their agent, so I am speaking on behalf of the applicant.
So Commissioner Argawal, if, if he is the, the agent, he, he can speak on behalf of the applicant. And we've been working with Mr. Lee over the course of the application submittals, so.
Isn't Mr. Lee also the president of Richmond's Chamber of Commerce? Is that a conflict of interest?
No, I think it's actually a great thing for us to bring in businesses. Oh, by the way, this facility, in ten years of its lease, will pay about a million dollar in tax to the city of Richmond.
My, my question is that is, is this allowed? Is this a conflict of interest?
Mr. Lee, I, I think that's directed to staff. So I, I defer that question to our city attorney that's present here tonight.
So I, I'm not gonna advise the applicant's conflict. I can advise, I'm the city's lawyer and I'm a lawyer for the members of the planning commission. He needs to determine his own conflict questions. I'm not gonna be able to opine on whether it's a conflict. I know he's very a- active in other projects.
Yes, he, and, and I'm concerned he might be active in other projects. But as an agent, he's getting paid as well as getting paid as the president of the Chamber of Commerce. So my concern is that this is a, a conflict of interest. And we appreciate business, at least I personally do. But here we've got an issue with crime and that is taking away dollars from residents to fight crime. And that is very concerning to me, as is this conflict of interest.
Yeah, and for the record, I'm not getting paid to be an agent for this facility. I wanna see businesses come to Richmond. I see that the city council has wanting to see cannabis business because it generates income for the city of Richmond. We, this year alone, we brought in twelve million dollar through cannabis business. It is estimated by next year that may even double because a lot of these cannabis facilities is coming up. We as a city needs these income. And these cannabis facility is safe, it's secured, and I think it's a good thing. And I'd like to see more businesses, whether it's cannabis or the hotel, to come to the city of Richmond.
Mr. Lee, do you live in Richmond?
No, I don't live in Richmond.
Yeah, because my question would be, why aren't they going to Danville? Or to Walnut Creek or to Lafayette?
I think they're coming to Richmond because it's a better city to, to, to do business. A lot of cities are like, they're leaving Oakland because it's safer. This is a better facility, better city to do business. So I think that's why they're coming here.
Right, and I will come back to the fact that crime has increased in Richmond and it's become very difficult for people with children and grandparents when police officers are called to support these businesses when the businesses aren't paying for these police officers. So, but, but, you know, but I, I will, you know, just bring that up in discussion with the, during deliberation with the commissioners.
Once again, this business is gonna bring about a million dollar revenue for our city.
Okay, are there any other questions for the applicant? If not, thank you. If you want, go ahead and take a seat. Are there others in the audience that wish to speak on this item?
So are we opening the public hearing at this point?
I thought I opened it earlier, but if I didn't, I'll do it now.
Okay, great. So we have one speaker from the audience on this item. It's Susan T.O. Sullivan. If you'd like to approach the diocesan, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. So as you can see from this exhibit C that she had pushed us up earlier, I live in Atchison Village, which the closest point is a hundred and seventy feet from these site area that has the cannabis. My main concern in coming was to learn about ventilation noise because I found in the plans that they're dealing with the odor issues. Do we know for a fact that the other cannabis's companies in that area are actually doing business or are they still in their startup mode? Do they still have all of their ventilation equipment going? Or is that not started up yet? Does anyone know that for certain?
Nobody up here does, but when the, when planners come back. Unless you, you, do you know if any of those others are act- are active?
Yeah, you hear a lot about the data centers that are causing so much noise problems because they have the constant ventilation going all the time, the climate control. So that was my concern here since I live reasonably close to it. And the money that the gentleman mentioned that the cannabis companies will be paying to the city, there's no guarantee any of that will go to police. The city council will do with it what they will.
Yeah, it goes into the general fund, right?
Right. If he said a million dollars over ten years, that's a hundred thousand a year. That's not even one police officer, probably.
A million a year. Did he say a million over ten years?
Yeah, he said a million over ten years, but then at another time he said twelve million for the businesses collectively, but I don't know what the time.
But that's over ten years and that's, again, one police officer salary plus health insurance, plus pension, plus their car and vehicle is a lot more than that. So, yes, having the officers taken away from reporting to crimes against residents to protect the businesses is a concern. And I'm concerned that Atchison Village is so close to the site, but because we're not part of the Santa Fe neighborhood, we, you know, we're not consulted and are not considered a neighborhood affected by this. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a question from the applicant, from the speaker that we couldn't answer and that was whether or not any of the cannabis businesses currently in this location that were mentioned, are any of them in actual operation? Or are they still in building up to, to operate?
I believe a number are operational. I know, Gabrielle, you had communicated with our code enforcement officer, Kevin, who provided some detail, if you could share that.
Unfortunately, we're not able to, we were not able to confirm if those other businesses are operating currently.
Do you wanna come up to the mic so we can? Well, the reason that we would, I'd ask you to come up to the mic is so that we can get it easily recorded and to the record of the meeting.
So there's three buildings, fifty, seventy and one hundred. And fifty west Ohio, they're, they've been operating for a while. Hundred is operating. I believe seventy is gonna start operation in two months.
So two of them are in operation?
Yes.
For a few months or have they been in parole?
I think it's been maybe within six months.
So they're fairly new in operation?
Yes.
And there, it haven't been any odor issues yet?
No, in fact, one of the letter that was sent by Jeff Wright, who owns the business behind Bridge Storage, they, he made it very clear he doesn't smell any odor coming. He's literally right next to it. And they've already paid their taxes a couple of times this year. So I think they've already produced several harvests and there is no complaint.
And the other part of the speaker's question was the noise that the ventilation systems might create. Are these extra-large blowers and so forth or?
No, all the, all the blowers gonna be inside. Only noise is the condensers that is outside and they're on the roof. And so these condensers are manufactured in such way that they do not produce any noise. There's no noise at all. There's probably more car noises than the noise coming from there.
Okay. Other speakers? Anybody else in the audience?
Yes, I do believe that we have two more audience speakers. However, the folks that are online, I do believe had their hands raised before the speaker cards were submitted. So if you'd like to go with the virtual speakers, I'll go ahead and call them. Our first speaker will be Victoria. And Victoria, if you could state your full name and city of residence.
Hi, my name is Victoria Sewicki. I live in Atchison Village in Richmond. I've been a member of Richmond, a resident for twenty-four years. And I believe this proposed cannabis project facility is practically in my backyard, as Susan said. She's my neighbor. I have three questions, the one comment quickly that I'm going to state while they're fresh in my mind. The, Mr. Lee, I said there's gonna be three full-time security officers. Is that twenty-four seven? That's question number one. Question that I have, number two, or just wanna comment. He said the fact that this facility is twenty-six feet high, I wanna say, don't underestimate the ingenuity of desperate people. And number three, he stated also that, you know, they're surrounded by four other facilities, fifty, seventy, eighty and one hundred. And that has contributed to the reduction or the increase of safety. And yet, with those other four facilities, we've had seventy-six calls, which I wanna thank Commissioner Alpa for bringing these issues. It is a security, security is extremely important to me. I live in the Iron Triangle. And, and, and fourth, the, the fact that it said, that he said that, Mr. Lee, I think is his name, said, well, we're, we're gonna generate a million dollars. To me, what I, what I'm concerned about, and I think my, my neighbors are concerned about, is the quality of life. This is a quality of life issue. And so there are three like major concerns: safety, the noise and air quality. I believe that, that, I just wanna, there's one other thing that I really would like implemented or somehow to be part of this, that the community has a right to know. And as, as environmental justice is here to stay and as part of that now idea or movement, I believe we in the community have a right to know what's going on. And some of the things we'd like to know, we'd like to see the air quality permits, the plans and training, permits and training, and hazardous waste, waste. You said there was, the, the water is, there's no water, wastewater going out. What about solid waste? What happens to that? I heard, I've read that the generators cause a lot of pollution. I would like to know about that and whether noise pollution and actually air pollution. And, and also the fact that, hang on a second, I have all these notes. The fact that the, you, you said that there's no noise, that's, there's no noise, there's no waste. And, and it's, oh, I know, we have the right to know which chemicals are in the, in the facility. We have the right to know that the fertilizer, the hazardous chemicals.
Victoria, you have ten seconds to wrap up.
Okay. And, and just, I really am concerned about our right to know. And I would like something set up concretely, planned, written down, where we will have updates on a regular basis and maybe community meetings where we can raise all of our issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. And next up, we have Madeline Marrow.
Hi, I also live in Atchison Village and I'm directly behind where that facility is. I'm probably about three hundred feet since you said the park is the thousand feet. And I'm concerned also about the smell. We are already subjected to so many horrible smells in this location. We've got the sewage treatment plant down the road. We've got the refinery right across the way. We've got- the way. We've got a public services down the road that has a compost pile that routinely goes sour. And we also have the coal trains that we're dealing with. And so this is not really strictly an industrial area. We have 450 units in Atchison Village, plus there's several hundred right next to us in Liberty Village. And I'm concerned that we are just completely surrounded by industry that is not beneficial to anyone's health. That's about all I've got to say. Oh, and also about crime, yeah, the, the police are so strapped. And I just don't see how they're going to deal with this because even though there's going to be all these methods and security guards, people, it's a highly desirable product. People are going to try very hard to get in there. And I think some of them may succeed or die trying. Thanks.
Thank you, Madeline. And next up, we have David.
Hi, David Corman, also in Atchison Village. Oh, right. Was wondering if a conditional requirement could be something related to the amount of time that the trucks can idle, specifically for my neighbors along the Greenway, whose backyard's back up to Ohio and can hear idling diesel trucks from the industrial use over there. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And next up, we have Tara. Tara, you can go ahead and speak when you're ready.
Thank you. I also live in Atchison Village. I was struck that the Santa Fe Neighborhood Council gave you a letter of support when the application says that the facility will give back to the community. And then it goes on to say that they're going to give $2,000 to the Santa Fe Neighborhood Council. That feels like a quid pro quo to me. We have 450 homes, so we've got much denser housing, just as close or closer than most homes in Santa Fe. And I think there should be direct outreach to Atchison Village, and we should be asked for our opinion. I often, the Ohio, that block of Ohio is part of the Greenway. It's the bike path that runs along the rail yards there. And I often walk my dog down there. And it's not uncommon now with the trucks coming and going, the, with the existing businesses, to not be able to get down Ohio or to have to sit there for a long period of time waiting to get through because of the trucks. I'm curious about how many trucks a day they, this facility anticipates using, because I, because that also definitely contributes to both noise and air pollution in the neighborhood. I also noticed that the, that Mr. Lee spoke about four full-time security guards. Is that at a time? Or is that four full-time security guards total, which wouldn't even cover 24 hours a day, seven days a week? So I'm curious about that. I also wonder about, I know that federal law makes it very, very difficult for cannabis businesses to do banking. And so having cash on hand is a huge problem for dispensaries. I don't know if this is a problem for a growing operation like this, but I'd like to know if that, if there's going to be a lot of cash in the building that would make it an attractive nuisance and even greater target for crime. And I realize I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tara. And then we have one final speaker here in the audience. It's Scott Charles. Sorry if I mispronounce your last name, but you could go ahead and start when you're ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to acknowledge that we can't really stop this project. I think it would be very difficult, given what I've seen in the project scope. However, I think there's a lot of things that could be done. Someone mentioned on the phone about having trucks not idling. I live in Atkinson Village as well. We talked about crime, smell, and noise. This is not really a NIMBY problem. It's really a quality of life thing is how, is how I see it. I've read articles from around the country where promises are made and not kept around smell. People are moving out of their houses because of the smell or the project is, they say one thing and they do another. Obviously, that's not this individual situation. I was the one that pointed out the point of sale desk in the plans. And then the planners realized that that was there. And now it's a condition that it not be there. But I'm wondering, how is it and why is it that the architects put that in there? Was that like to try and slide it in and we wouldn't notice? And why is it that the city didn't notice that? Why is it that the citizens notice things? So I would encourage the city to maybe take some more time to look at this project. We didn't really hear about it. And in the village, we're not part of Santa Fe, and Santa Fe was reached out to, but we weren't. And in fact, to try and submit comments was very difficult. When I emailed several people, I got bound, I was told who to email, and I got bounced back. This person's no longer with the company because it's a, it's not a city employee. And it's no harm, no foul, but it has been a really hard process to even engage. So I would like to see this project get postponed so that there could be more civic dialogue about this. I think someone mentioned how much cash is going to be in the facility. I would also ask how many trucks are going to come and go full of cash, because that's another issue. There was something in the plan that said there'll always, there'll be a manager there at all times, but it's not really clear. Does that mean 24 hours a day or just during business, day nine to six or nine to five? I also read online from several articles where people were having hard times with the cannabis facilities, that when the police or EMS enters a facility, they sometimes have to wear hazmat suits if there's a mold problem, if there's anything, if they're not familiar. And it adds to the burden. I didn't mention at the front end, I've been, as an adult, a lifelong supporter of legalization. So I am one of those people. And that's why I mentioned, this isn't just a NIMBY thing. It really feels like it's a quality of, of life. So I appreciate being able to be involved. And I really wish that our community could be more involved. And it feels like we were kind of excluded by this, only having Santa Fe's Neighborhood Council. And some of us live like 200 feet away. And we didn't receive materials till the last minute. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yeah, that concludes our speakers.
One more.
I didn't receive your speaker card. Do you still have it with you? Or, yeah, if you want to go ahead and bring that up, and then this will be our last speaker. Technically, speakers have to be signed up before the item is called. But if you can hand me your speaker card.
Yeah, I'm also an Atchison Village resident. And at this point, pretty much all the points have been made. But I want to second what everyone else has said about quality of life, about trucks, about air quality, all the issues that we deal with in that industrial corner of town. I too was pretty shocked, especially given that right on page two and three of the report, the map shows and the text says that the nearest residential uses are in Atchison Village. And the fact that, that we were not the subject of, of any outreach about this till people looked at agendas and found out at the last minute is a little distressing. In the testimony tonight, I was quite impressed by Mr. Lee's line, "It's so high-tech, it runs itself." Ah, yes, have we not heard that in other times and places? And I feel that I want to be sure that there's some kind of ongoing monitoring of air quality, of noise, of all the possible things that could not live up to the high-tech expectations. There, there didn't really seem to be in the report any kind of ongoing monitoring and accountability and so forth. So I hope that'll be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for the record, that was Betty Marvin.
Okay, I think that's our speakers. If now, I think we have opportunity for Mr. Lee to respond to the comments. You have like five minutes, I think.
Okay. I didn't intend to share this, since the commissioner brought it up, why I'm so active. I grew up very conservative. In fact, very religious family. So I was very against cannabis. Until several years ago, my son had mental health issue and attempted suicide. He was hospitalized. And honestly, it was cannabis that brought him out. And since then, I've been very advocate of what this medicine healing could do in our community. So I am very active of ensuring, number one, that they are compliant, that we give them fair chance, and we brings revenue for our city. Cannabis is the most highly regulated business in all businesses. They're highly regulated. They cannot use chemical that is poisonous. We have health department that come and visit us, make sure we have hazmat handbooks. In fact, county, his name is Nick, he's going to come and visit and make sure we follow every rule. It's very highly regulated. There is going to be three security guard 24 hours. They spend a lot of money. In fact, they spend more money on security than anything else in cannabis business.
So is that three, one every eight hours or three every eight hours?
Three security guards simultaneously for 24 hours. So, sorry, three security guard at all time for 24 hours.
At all times, okay.
Yes, yes. I, I honestly, I've helped several cannabis facility to come to Richmond because it's safer to do business in Richmond than other city. And so all the businesses I've helped, in fact, probably majority of the cannabis business have never reported crime. And so I'm really hoping that we can bring more businesses here. They're, they're very community conscious. They've been talking very closely with Santa Fe. And it's not, you know, giving money to get permitted. It's $2,000 to help them with their pancake community event that they do. It's very little, it's not a lot of money. But they are, they want to be part of this community. So I, I really hope that they do get approved. I think they bring value to our community, especially those who need these products to deal with a lot of mental health issues. So I am very active. I don't think it's conflict of interest. I think it's a good thing for our community.
Could you answer the question about the trucks? How many trucks, do you know?
Yeah. So a lot of them, they come in bulk. And so often, they get delivered once a month. So, and a lot of it is just nutrition for the, the, the plants. A lot of them don't even use dirt anymore. They use wakwu and, and other products. So they try to conserve spending and waste. And even the waste product is very highly regulated, and how they can throw away the waste, where it goes. And again, all those are regulated by DCC, Department of Cannabis Control.
Are these 40-foot-long diesels or are they a smaller?
A smaller truck, yeah.
Smaller trucks?
Mm-hmm.
And do they sit there idling?
No, no. I don't think you could idle any truck in any city and pollute the air. So I think they will expect to delivery once a month to bring in chemical to, nutrition to, to help the, the plants. Yeah, so that's a very important question.
Just a quick point of clarification for the public. There shouldn't be.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So just go ahead and direct the answer to the commission. And then the time for the public speakers has come and gone at this point.
So their trucks going, are, the trucks coming in, don't, you're saying, don't sit there and idle? The trucks leaving, do they sit there and idle while they're waiting to be loaded?
No, they don't sit idle.
And are those 40-foot trucks or those 24?
Usually, they're smaller trucks because the local businesses that deliver these nutrition to these facilities.
I mean, the ones taking your, your product to distributor?
Oh, you're talking about how this gets, so that, that, again, that's a very good question. So one of the role, reason why there's a roll-up door is when there is a product that leaves, it comes in, roll-up door shuts down, it gets loaded, security guard ensure that there's, there's not, no, no one out there. And then roll-up door goes up and they, they, they drive out. So all the activity happens within.
Inside an enclosed space?
Yes, yes.
So they, they'd be doomed to be idling in there. They'd pull, they'd.
No, they're idling there, yeah.
In, one of the questions, things that was brought up is how are the public going to be informed of the monitoring going on? And I noticed you have a, there's an exhibit E in the things that you submitted, which talks about, you know, reaching out to the community. But I'm, don't think, I didn't see any condition of approval that required that to actually happen. So would you be open to some kind of a, your exhibit E says annually you'll submit a report to, I think it says the commu, the neighborhood council. So I mean, I would like something like that to be a condition of approval, that we, though we know that it's going to happen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that's important for the applicant as well as the community. I believe in the packet, they mentioned twice a year that they're going to be meeting up with the, the neighborhood and just informing them what's going on. If there's any concern, they will contact the applicant. You know, one of the things the other county does, that's, I think maybe we could put a condition here, is that you put a phone number. If they ever smell odor, call this number. And that is, I know that's where we call it Contra Costa County. And so that if they do smell odor, they call that number and they immediately rectify that, that problem. But there's so much carbon, I mean, so much filter in the facility, I can't imagine any odor coming out of that building.
Well, I think the neighborhood.
Tarko filter.
I think the neighborhood was concerned about a variety of issues. They, they were concerned about what are the nutrients that are being brought in, what other chemicals, you know, pesticides or whatever being brought in. So what I.
They're not allowed to use pesticides.
No, we're not.
I, I'm just.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I have had to run analytical tests for various things coming, grown in California that were various cannabis projects. And the pesticide tolerance is zero.
Great. Okay, so I guess.
That is correct. Absolutely no pesticide.
My question to you is that, are you willing to add a condition of approval that says you will conduct this annual community meeting as described in your exhibit E and maintain these open channels of communication as described in exhibit E?
Yes.
That's closed.
I think that's very important.
And just for clarification, Chair Harrison, there is a condition, number 16, that speaks to the Neighborhood Responsibility Plan in Exhibit A. And it does require implementation of that. So I think we're covered on that.
I think we should.
If you want to further clarify that.
I would like to clarify that there will be an annual meeting with the community. Somehow we need to invite this neighborhood that feels that they're left out. And.
I think we should have conversation about this when, when we deliberate.
Yeah, but I, I do.
Yes, I would agree with that. Yeah, that we should deliberate on it.
Okay, but I would like to enhance that app, that condition to, you know, require an annual meeting with detailed information that would provide the neighborhood, neighborhoods with adequate information that they can understand the health and quality of life risks that are, that potentially originate from these facilities. Is that something you can agree to?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the cycle? Like, how frequently, from planting to harvest and processing, do you then, what, bale and sell?
Right, right.
How does that work?
So there's, so it's interesting. Plants are like human being. It needs sun, it needs darkness, it has to sleep. That's why there's always 12, 12 cycle. So plants, so from the mother, they cut the mother and they create a cologne. And the cologne sits there for about four weeks until it's big enough. And then next day, they call it a teen. In that teen period, they sit there for one month. And in that teen period, they're, they're, they're more enlightened than darkness. Just like normal teen, they're very energetic. And so after that teen period, that's when they flower. And they flower for, I believe, a total of nine weeks since the, since the teen to flower is nine weeks. And once that flower, when, when, when the flower is ready to harvest, then it is, it's dried. And I didn't know, and learning this process, what I also learned is that you have to keep out the female plant with the male plant. And you have to allow an emerald plant, because once female plant gets in there, it no longer flowers. And so you take that, after nine weeks, you take that into what they call drying period. In that drying period, in two weeks, they would dry it at certain temperature. And then they will cut it and they will package it. And they'll call the distributor. Another thing that's very important is that plant cannot leave that facility. Once it's dried, according to DCC regulation, is that only the distributor that is not part of the cultivators can come and pick up that. And so all that is tracked. So since the mother to cutting the cologne to teen to flower to, to packaging, it's all tagged. And that tag number is associated with this. So. So down the line, if someone gets sick, they know where that cologne came from. So every plant gets tagged, dried, and then when they're ready to sell, they call the distributor, so no money ever gets exchanged. And, and the previous speaker said, well, now, nobody's dealing with cash, we're allowed banking now, and so all the transaction happens through banking now. And so when they are ready to sell it, they call the distributor, distributor comes, pick up the package, and then they take it away, and that's end of what the cultivators deal with.
And approximately, how many distributors do you think you guys are going to be dealing with?
Normal cultivation facility deals with three or four distributors because they have a relationship.
What I'm, what I'm trying to get to here is, when people are asking about trucks and frequency, so on one hand you have medium being delivered for growth medium or whatever, and probably some nutrients, and then, and then you have finished product being delivered. So it sounds like the, do they come, is it sort of a, every week you have a couple of people coming in, or, give us an idea of what that looks like?
So those trucks, DCC required to have cameras in these delivery trucks and that takes these products, they're not big trucks, they're.
No, it's the frequency of arrival.
Yeah, they're smaller trucks, normal-sized truck, and I would say maybe.
Five trucks per week, 10 trucks per week?
Yeah, just frequency, I'm just trying to get an idea.
I would say maybe once a week that they come and pick up the product.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, so I really hope that you can approve this part, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, if there's no other, I think we've.
We got the cash, we figured out frequency of trucks, and it's probably twice that because we got input and then echo.
I'm gonna, I guess I'm, we think, I think we can close the public hearing then and bring it back to the commission for discussion. So I close the public hearing and open it up for commissioners for discussion or further clarifications you may need.
Yeah, if I can, oh.
Sorry, Commissioner Argol, I just had a question for staff, that's okay. There was a question about noise, and I know that there was environmental review done, and noise is one of the sections, do you know, and I don't have it in front of me, do you know what conclusion was made about, clearly, there were no significant impacts, but do you know what the conclusion was in the noise review?
So I did want to clarify that this project is categorically exempt from CEQA, so that does mean that there's no environmental review beyond that. So the project would be, the noise ordinance would be applicable to the project, however, the project will only, the hours of operation are during daytime. And so. Yeah, and so the daytime decibel levels would be applicable here.
Just to quickly add on that, it is correct that this item is exempt from CEQA, however, the city does have, as Gabrielle mentioned, a noise ordinance, so there is a threshold to which, you know, they'll have to adhere to that performance standard for the district. Typically, how it works is if we do receive complaints from neighbors, we would send a code enforcement officer out there and potentially contract with an outside company to do a noise study, and that would help us determine if there's a violation, either, you know, frequent or ongoing happening, that we would be able to enforce the code and work with the applicant to address those issues.
If, if there was some sense that it was violating the noise ordinance?
That is correct, if there was, you know, complaints from multiple neighbors, if they were frequent, I think initially we would, you know, talk to the applicant or the operator and say, hey, we've received various complaints, this seems to be the generator, whether that's a, you know, device on the site or something else, we'd try to pinpoint what that source is and try to make operational changes, and then if we still send out a code enforcement officer and the violation's still happening, we would take other measures to bring them into compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Argol, I think you had something.
Yes, yeah, I think we are in our deliberation time now. So I want to first just say that I'm concerned about the conflict of interest. Mr. James Lee does not live in Richmond, is the president of the local Chamber of Commerce, and is speaking as an agent. I was particularly concerned because he said that he believes, no, he said that city council is supportive of cannabis businesses, there's no evidence that he provided for that. I know he's trying to make a sale here because he's an agent, but I'm just concerned about sort of these statements that are, that are not facts. So that's just point number one, that, you know, I'm concerned about this. The second point that I want to make is that I really appreciate the folks in the audience from Atchison Village, Susan, Victoria, Betty, Madeline, Tara, and I think I'm missing a few others, from coming and speaking about the problems that these businesses, that a cannabis business creates. And I also really appreciate Lieutenant DeShia's talking about it, 76 calls is a staggering number, particularly given that these criminals have, carry firearms, and so close to residential neighborhoods. So, you know, I, I'm very, very concerned on behalf of my fellow residents of Richmond that, that these cannabis businesses are taking away police personnel from serving us with the, with the crimes in our neighborhood, in our neighborhoods, and instead serving these businesses. I also really appreciated Ms. Susan's back-of-the-napkin math, that the revenue earned from these businesses does not actually cover even one police officer. So I just wanted to call out and appreciate the folks from Atchison Village who, who came out today to speak about all these problems. You know, I'm, I'm not able to support, I'm not able to support this. I think, you know, as a city, the city of pride and purpose, I think we have to think about the residents, and residents get shafted because it's all about business and taxpayer dollars and, and, and the dollars that businesses bring in, what about the dollars that we pay as residents of the city? Crime is a really big problem, you know, it's very easy to do hand-baby stuff such as meetings every six months and this and that, we all know nothing gets done, and these folks from Atchison Village are going to be stuck with yet one more facility, you know, putting, putting their homes, you know, in, in the line of fire, so to speak, and, you know, in a, in a threatening condition from a security standpoint. So I'm just really concerned about, you know, about this, and that, and that, you know, that the residents, for which cities are built, I thought they were built for you and I to live with a high quality of life. So, once again, just very concerned about this, I think 76 calls, many of them firearms related is a staggering number, and I, I do feel for the Atchison neighborhood, and I, and I'm not able to support this project, you know, for, for this reason.
Thank you, anybody else have comments? I have some comments or questions, but, okay. Perhaps I can balance this by the city attorney, but I, the definition of a conflict of interest with which we as a planning commission need to deal, I don't think what has been described by my fellow commissioner is a, the kind of, is an actual conflict of interest as you would see under, you know, the Brown Act or something like that, it seems like it's a perception rather than an actual conflict of interest.
Well, I think, I think the analysis is more around, you know, who, whose conflict it is, so, you know, you as a commissioner could have a conflict under the Political Reform Act or the common law conflicts of interest, but the analysis, you know, is, is around your position as a commissioner, or, you know, Form 700 filers or city, you know, city employees, or, you know, elected officials, so I really cannot speak to the, you know, the conflict question. I will say that, you know, the, the applicant is not present here, and so I think that needs to be on the record. I, I know that, you know, staff has, has informed me that, that Mr. Lee has been present at, at meetings, and he has represented that he's an agent, but, you know, on the agenda itself, it's, the applicant is not Mr. Lee. So I, I just wanted to put that on the record.
I think it's what we're, to me, that's, that kind of a subjective definition of a conflict of interest, it's personal, and for me, that's, that's not an issue, obviously as for Commissioner Argol. Is the police officer still with us?
Unfortunately, I believe he had to leave, so he's no longer in the attendees.
I seem to recall him saying that these 76 calls were earlier, they've come down substantially since then, and I'm not sure any of them were for this loci.
Three years, he said. Did he not say it was over three years?
Yeah, I don't know, but I know you also.
Six, five a year, I believe that's what he said, maybe I'm wrong, but I think that's what he said.
Yeah, and that they have come down in recent years, and I would say that, given the lack, the short time the facilities have been operating in this, this location, neighborhood, the buildings we're talking about, very few, if any, of those were actually associated with this particular location there, whether they were, what facilities they're located, associated with, I really don't know.
Through the chair, I will add, I also spoke to Community Development Director Lena Velasco about this about a week ago, and just sort of tried to get an idea of cannabis operations in the city and the level of crime compared to other businesses in the city of Richmond, and I think it was consistent with what Lieutenant DeShia said, is that although there is calls for service and crimes and robberies, and many of them could be armed, that is not very distinct from what other businesses in the city of Richmond are experiencing. I didn't get the sense that it was a problem specifically with cannabis businesses, that, you know, all of the businesses in the city of Richmond are experiencing issues from time to time, and that, you know, there's not a significant concentration, if you will, of robberies directed at cannabis businesses, so I did want to share that.
Thank you.
You know, it would be good to bring facts to the table about these really important things, because I think 76, even over three years, particularly firearms, is quite a staggering number, but facts would be really helpful, so just wanted to throw that out.
Do, do we know, how many, for staff, how many cannabis businesses are there in Richmond?
Yes, I believe Mr. Lee alluded to that earlier, I did have a printout, just from memory, I believe it's seven, and I do have the breakdown of the different types of cannabis activities in the city, if you give me a second here.
Yeah, because there's cultivation.
A number of sheets here, so there is three retailing businesses, seven small indoor cultivation, and two medium indoor cultivation as of September of 2023.
I guess the other question for staff is the notification process, that seems as though this, I don't know the boundaries of our neighbor, you know, councils, but it sounds like this particular neighborhood is floating out there with no representation on the council?
So as far as notification is concerned, the zoning ordinance requires notification of property owners and tenants within 300 feet of the subject site. There was a, a few properties within that radius that hit Atchison Village, and because it hit Atchison Village, it didn't seem, makes, to make sense to me as zoning administrator to just notify those two or three properties in Atchison, so we actually went a step further and notified everybody in Atchison. So we did go beyond the scope of our noticing requirements, however, this is.
When, when was that done, early on in the project, or here at the tail end, that you reached out to the, that neighborhood?
This was when, this was scheduled for a public hearing, so this would have been a few weeks ago.
A few weeks ago? Well, it, I mean, it's, it's a never-ending issue with planning processes, some people always get left out, so I understand that, staff does their best to respond to it, but it is, always comes up.
Yeah, I will say the neighborhood council of record for this site is Santa Fe, the subject site is not in the Atchison Village neighborhood council, although, you know, given the amount of feedback that you've heard from that community, if there is an interest in, you know, having the applicant outreach to that specific neighborhood council, I certainly think it would help with answering some of the questions that they have.
Yeah, I would agree, we need to, if, again, I've asked for a modification of that condition, if we need to name specific neighborhood councils so that we know we are getting to those residents who are most concerned, assuming this project goes forward, I would like for you to include those kinds of specifics and any modifications to that condition.
Understood.
Can I, can I add to that and ask a question of staff regarding ongoing reporting for a project? And I note that this one property has one, two, three, four, or will have four separate cannabis facilities on it, and I, I just wonder if there's any way to condition a report on the, from the general property? And I wonder if it's possible to have a condition that the report be made to Planning Commission yearly? Because then it's not somebody going in somewhere and you don't hear about it, or we don't hear about it. And I, you know, we do have the report from Chevron every year, that's, it's staff time, and I know it's, I guess I'm just throwing that out there, and I'd like to hear what you think about a condition like that.
I know we've used that type of condition on other projects in the past, I would have to reference the code to see if there's a provision that specifically allows for that, and I would also be open to the city attorney's comments on that type of a condition, actually.
Is it a condition to kind of do an annual report of the?
The applicant does a report. I'm sorry, applicant does a report to commission annually?
Yeah, I don't see an issue with that, but I'm also, you know, as you know, I'm not your, your normal planning commission attorney, but I, let me, let me do a little research, but I don't see a legal restriction for that.
Because there's that, that one that they did for Republic, that every two years, they, I mean, that they had to do it?
Yeah.
And sort of re.
I mean, there is quite a difference in scale between Chevron and Republic and, and a property owner, but, I mean, it's a fairly large property with many facilities.
With the four of them, that's the issue, is that it's not one, it's four.
We're only dealing with the applicant for one of those, there's no way to extend a condition we might apply to this project to the other three buildings, that's, that's a dilemma.
And so I just checked the cannabis ordinance, and there's no provision that specifically requires that, that doesn't mean that one couldn't be placed on this, you know, project and any other project, case by case, as you mentioned, Chevron and Republic Services have similar conditions, however, I would caution taking a little bit more heavy-handed approach, especially since this operator has not, you know, established a track record. Certainly, if we approve this application and we hear from members of the public that there are code violations or nuisances, we do have a revocation process under the conditional use permit ordinance to bring this back to the Planning Commission based on the feedback that we've heard to potentially look at revoking the use permit, and that could serve as a decision point or an annual reporting point.
But there is a condition right now for. But there is a condition right now for a report to the community.
That's correct, and I think that's the condition that we were looking to-
And that would be to go to a community, a neighborhood council and make a report at a neighborhood council meeting.
And just copy us on it.
Although it doesn't specify, I think, the Atchison Village. I think it's just for the Santa Fe.
Right, so we could expand the condition to include-
Yeah, I, I would like to be as specific as we can to ensure these neighborhoods have a meeting and have a report. And they, they list, hopefully before that would occur, the, there would be a pre-meeting with the owner of the facility so that the types of topics about which the neighborhood would like to hear are known before the meeting happens. So it's, it can be a useful meeting. So I, I mean, that can all be in the condition, but I think it can be in a discussion that you staff have with the applicant.
Understood. Thank you.
You know, I want to, you know, I also want to add that, that several folks, folks from Atchison Village came here today to speak out. If they want to speak out at a later time, what recourse do they really in reality have? It's, it's fine to say that, you know, they can come and speak out and some action will be taken, but there aren't any particulars tied to that. Like, like what is, what is the formal way to do it for them to be-
Commissioner Argawal, I think what Planner Rojas mentioned was that, that one of the conditions of approval, if there are complaints, those can get brought, brought, excuse me, brought back to staff, to the commission, and the conditional use permit can be revoked. So that's the recourse that the neighborhood would have if, if this thing's going off the rails and the, the neighborhood brings that to the planning department's attention, they are with, the planning department is within their rights to do an investigation and potentially revoke the, the conditional use permit under which that operates. So that's, that's the process by which the neighborhood can protect itself. To me, the neighborhood-
You know, that's-
Go ahead.
You know, that's not a specific process. A specific process would have numbers attached to it. There is a vote that will be taken or something along those lines. There were six or eight Atchison Village residents who came today to talk about the problems that this facility is going to create for them.
Potentially, yeah.
They came here today. They came here today. They raised their hand. They spoke out courageously about this matter here today. And, and, and there are no specifics tied to how they would raise their hand again and whether they would even be heard.
Well, I, I would disagree with you on that point, but-
What, what are, then I would like to know the specifics. I, I would like to know because someone going to the Planning Commission, how many people need to go to the Planning Commission, within what timeframe, what is the process? Those are the kind of specifics that would be very helpful to the residents of Atchison Village.
Whether it's one complaint or 10 complaints, the planning staff, if they feel that complaint, warrants their investigating, the planning, the conditional use permit. At that point, the process has been started. I, and, you know, you, the planners can correct me if I'm wrong, but at that point, once the process has started, they, they can make a determination that, that can, problems that are being pointed out by the neighborhood can be fixed without impacting the conditional use permit. But if we, they find that the applicant is unwilling to correct the particular problems that are occurring, then that would go into the next stage of, you know, coming to staff, preparing a report to the Planning Commission recommending revoke, revocation of the conditional use permit. So it's not a matter of how many people speak or when they speak. It's a matter of, once the process getting initiated by enough concern expressed by the neighborhood that the planning staff takes action. And sometimes that may be calling the planner every day until he gets tired of getting called and he does something, or maybe it's, you know, I don't know how they do that.
Feel is a very subjective word. I'm sorry, feel is a very subjective word, that the planning department will feel and, you know, that they need to take action. These folks in Atchison Village can be just, you know, left out in the cold with words such as feel without due process. Once a facility is allowed to, allowed to be established, it's very difficult to, to revoke that facility's license. They are here today. They are here today trying to influence us.
Through the chair, I was just going to point out that there is a very specific process that's outlined in the code under RMC Section 1504-803-130, revocation. So there is a process for the zoning administrators, City Attorney's Office, to initiate a revocation. There are findings associated, public notices. So as Vice Chair Harrison pointed out, one of the ways that you can initiate that process is by showing that there's been consistent violations of the code, and then we would go out and verify that. If, if there is a showing of that, that information goes to staff. We then present you with a revocation application. Or you could also have members of the public, you know, join these, this is part of what the reason that open forum is on the agenda. If members from the Atchison Village or any members from other neighbors notice that there's issues or violations at the property, they would come to the hearing and, and share that. And potentially the Planning Commission can direct us to initiate an investigation and possibly a revocation. So there's very, there's multiple avenues in which we could initiate a revocation.
It's just that crime, you know, what, what is that, what is that objective criteria for crime? And what is the criteria that police officers are being taken away from actually neighborhoods where people live and from burglaries and assaults to these businesses? There is no objective criteria for something like that, and it is our taxpayer dollars that pay for the police.
Yeah, I, may I?
Oh, please.
It's really hard to balance, it's really difficult to balance in this city because this is an industrial city in many, many ways. I moved my business here because, and my home, because it's an industrial business or area, and I like it, you know, but the trucks can come in and the freeways are here and it's easy. And I really have appreciated the industrial community in Richmond, and you're not going to find that in Lafayette. I grew up in Lafayette. There is no industry zoned there. The biggest industry there is probably people buying-
Cannabis.
The cannabis project, products from these particular outlets. So, and I, and I would also point out two other things. One, there's a, they're already in, in process. So I'd be curious if you guys have seen or experienced through whatever sort of sensory issues, problems with the current organizations that are growing over there. And I think the other thing is, when you do have an industrial city, one of the things I love about my business, and I'd say this is very true of the business that they're proposing, you don't have pesticides going down the drains. You don't have any sort of really nasty industrial pollutants to deal with. So I think finding businesses like that and nurturing them in the community is, is part of this weird balance. And I, I sort of like that they're all together. There's going to be four of them. Two of them are already functioning, one's already about to go. So it seems to me it's going to make it easier. And I think also since the banking thing was dealt with by the government, there's less incentive for the crime that has historically occurred as a result of growing operations. So I don't know that that helps, but that's how I see it.
If we're ready, I'll call, we can call for a motion. We can approve, deny, we could continue. What is the wish of the commission? I'm willing to approve, just so you, so, so if-
I just would like to see that condition added onto your, the annual thing.
Right.
I think you should make a motion.
All right. I will do that. Put my glasses on.
Through, through the chair, I'd like the city attorney to just, we, we were checking our bylaws and we wanted to make sure that we have ample numbers to pass a vote here with the limited number of attendees that we have at the commission. So if you could-
And we, we do. So under Chapter 3.20060 of the municipal code, if a quorum is present, which it is, it's a majority of those present to adopt the motion. So in this instance, you have four present. A majority would be three, so you need three for this to pass.
Thank you.
Okay. I move that the Planning Commission approve, God, I was on the wrong place, that the Planning Commission approve application number PLN 235-265, subject to the recommended conditions of approval and resolution number 24-0, with this, with the addition of or expansion of a condition that further spells out the requirements of the owners to meet annually with the neighborhood council and ensure that all the neighbors, areas of the neighborhood are included in that notification and that they go over the activities at that facility at that annual meeting. I don't know. There's more, if you want to, you can clean that up.
And just as a point of clarification, when you mentioned neighborhood councils, that would be Atchison Village and Santa Fe?
Yes. If they're, yeah, if, if those are two separate ones. Again, I don't know all the, who all the neighborhood councils are in Richmond. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay.
Can I just say something before we vote?
Absolutely.
Just that I really appreciate the comments that we've received from the community. I really appreciate Commissioner Argawal's concerns. I do feel, I've, I've read the security plan over while we've been deliberating and they are requiring a guard, a separate private company that will provide security, and that is 24/7 onsite. That's a requirement of the security plan, and there's a separate condition saying that the security plan must be followed. And I understand the other concerns you have about noise, about trucks, about odors. It does seem that this facility has a plan in place to address those issues as well. So, and I hope that there is recourse if something happens and there isn't, they aren't following this. I do believe the city has a process in place to rectify the situation, so.
I guess the other-
Commissioner, Commissioner Brubaker, I wanted to add a little bit to what you said. And, and once again, facts over here would be helpful. From what I understand is that private security companies cannot actually apprehend criminals, et cetera. I, I know we hire private security companies and all they can do is call the cops, and that's about it. So some facts here would, you know, would be helpful. I'm not quite sure if this decision can be tabled, but if, I, I mean, there's a, there's a motion on the floor, of course, and, and if I'm the only one, you know, who will not be able to vote for the motion, so be it. But once again, the facts would be helpful because really from what I understand is that security companies just, they can only call the cops and that's all.
Okay. I guess we've exhausted our discussion, so I guess we're ready for a roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Vice Chair Harrison?
Yes.
Secretary Brubaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Argawal?
No.
And Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
And the motion does carry.
Okay, thank you for coming and sharing your comments. I hope we added a little bit of mixed stuff to the conditions that'll make it more acceptable. By the way, the other cannabis facility would have the same conditional use permit. Would that be correct?
Members of the public, if you can have your discussions out in the lobby, please? If, if you can transition over to the lobby to have your conversation, that'd be great. Thank you.
I was asking, the other cannabis facilities in this complex, all each have their individual conditional use permit. So in effect, any one of them could be, if, if the problem is originating somewhere else, the same process could be applied to revoke their conditional use permit. Okay, I think we now have a report of officers, commissioners, and staff.
The only report I have is that our next regularly scheduled, scheduled meeting falls on July 4th, and as is a holiday, we will not have you come in, and so we're going to be canceling that meeting. So the next regular meeting will be July 18th. That's it for my reports.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
Do you, do you think commissioners, do you think that there should be some automatic canvassing of commissioners to make sure we have a quorum?
We need to be doing something, yeah.
Seems, you know, in, in the past, that, that canvassing has happened when one commissioner says, I'm not going to come, and then you've done a good job of reaching out to everyone else, just making sure you're going to come, but maybe we should just make that automatic, whether-
Absolutely, and we can add a clarification to when we distribute the packet to formally respond that you're going to be able to make it. A lot of you have been actually responding, hey, I'm not going to be able to make it for the meeting. So this time around, Aaron, let us know upfront. And I think Commissioner Golovets just had an emergency that came up. So although if an emergency does come up, please give us ample notice because if, as you noticed, there's many people here waiting for the commission to do its business. But we will definitely add some clarification to the agenda requesting a canvassing, if you will.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Was there something, Gay, that you wanted to bring up? I guess maybe it was just this idea of notifying people.
Not me.
Okay. See, I think we're done. I will adjourn the meeting of the Planning Commission at 9:16.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Thank you.